Begin the Rural President's Land Use Public Hearing. Welcome to Queensborough Hall. For those of you who are here for the first public hearing of experience, I'd like to explain what the House rules and the Charter requires for this procedure. First rule, please take out your electronic cellular devices and silence them. All devices must be silenced. This is a recorded, videotaped public procedure. And it is live feeding on YouTube. I just want to explain to you what the House rules are. This is a larger than usual hearing and space is a bit tight. And I think I said welcome, so welcome again. So, most of you should have a calendar in your possession. The calendar identifies the order that the hearing will proceed. Calendar item number, it gives a description of which item that's being heard, and the location, and the community board that it's affecting. The conversations will be limited to the applicant, who will stand at the podium, introduce themselves, and give a full depiction of the project at hand. Conversation will be limited between applicants and the Rural President and her staff. There is absolutely no cross-conversation. If you feel that you must have a conversation with someone else in the room, please step out into the corridor. Because this is digitally recorded, all the back information may cause some important information not to be recorded to a legible or audible tone. I know that can be a little inconvenient, but the procedure will be very specific. If you are interested in testifying, any of you have this yellow slip or you filled it out already? You fill out your information, please print, and where you are affiliated with, your contact information, and whether you are for or against the item. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. The sound of the bell means conclude, and we'll move on to the next speaker. If you have any questions, my name is Lisa Atkins. This is John Gantchoy, my colleague, and we are here to give you any direction that you need. The Rural President will be coming in, and she will officially begin the procedure, and the recording will begin. If you have any questions, please feel free. But once again, I remind everyone to silence your electronic devices. Thank you.
Buenos dias. Quiero prover una versión de lo que ella acaba de decir en español. Ella mencionó, le da bienvenida a todos los que están aquí presentes que hablan español, a la audición del Presidente, del Condado de Queens. Yo diría, en esta audición, si usted desea hablar acerca de algún artículo o algún proyecto que está en la agenda, por favor de llenar un formulario de lo que ella mostró, indicar en el formulario especialmente el proyecto en el cual usted va a hablar acerca. Y cada persona va a tener tres minutos para hablar. Al final de los tres minutos, la campanita va a sonar y quiere decir que usted ha terminado. La Presidenta va a estar aquí en un momento. Ella va a comenzar la audición. Gracias. Y si tiene una pregunta, le puede hacer a la persona que trabaja aquí, a la Presidenta de Condado. Gracias.
Okay. Thank you. Now, a couple things I failed to mention. Welcome, but you cannot stand there. Señor, you cannot stand there. You can stand at the door or anywhere away from the podium where the presenters will be. And fortunately, we're kind of tight for space today. We do have a few items, as I said, please refer to the calendar to know which items are you will be speaking on. If it's at the end of the program, you ever want to take the moments in the hallway, let's try to move this as quickly as possible. Are you too DJ? I'm sorry. So, fire code requires that we keep cars as clear as possible. You can stand as close to your hands. We're going to have a PowerPoint, so those two gentlemen are going to be right in view. I know, I just take out some chairs and have to. Calendar item number one.
Hello, it's Jerry. Get him up, Chris.
Walter? Go this way, that door. There's a young man named Ken who'll give you the sign. No. This is the maximum capacity fire code allows to this room. I'm extending that a little bit so that more people can stand and observe. But, um... The PowerPoint will be taking place on this wall.
So, when can people...
The space is the space. This is a 1934 building. What can I tell you? We can't remove the Mark Robert Moses table. This doesn't happen. It's no, no, we can't.
Be careful, I can't have people in front of that camera then.
Yeah.
Yep.
I go to these land use hearings almost every month. So, you've been in this room?
Yeah.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our House. We're welcoming all the individuals here today for this hearing. We have some rules. We've not read the rules yet, right? Okay. So, apparently the rules have already been read in two languages, which is great. We do want you to know that we uphold ourselves to the rules. We do allow the developer, I guess it was applicant, to make the application. We then, if you are on the list to testify, we're going to take two to three minutes. We do then ask that you keep your testimony after that for two minutes. I also ask that if everything has been said, we love when people say, "I'm here, I'm testifying, I'm on the record, and I agree." Right? That's good. We love that, too. And you will be noted on the record for bringing with the testimony that was previous. And we appreciate everyone coming out for this hearing. And thank you for being here. It's a great part of our public schedule, and it's a great part of having community involvement when everyone comes to testify. My name is Melinda Katz. I am the Rural President. And let's have the first one testify.
Calendar item number one. BSA number eight six seven five five BZ. The applicant is Ms. Gonzada. We affect the community board number five.
Do we have anybody interpreting?
Please.
Do you want someone interpreting? Or do we feel like we're okay? Perfect. So, are we getting someone? We'll get someone to try and interpret it back there. We hope they're heard. We should have had the... Who are we getting? No, who are we getting to testify to? When you testify, apparently I've been told I'm not talking into the mic well enough. So, when we testify, we want to make sure that we talk into the mic so it's there for the record. We all saw me coming to interpret. It'll be a few minutes. But we want to start. Thank you.
So, it's time to see it.
Please.
Hello. My name's Nancy Lee Paul. I'm with Nasir J. Gonzada LLC. We have filed an application with the BSA. There is a gas station at 66-15 Gordon Avenue. It's along the Queens Midtown Expressway. It was established in 1956, approved originally under the BSA, and there have been extensions periodically since. We are applying for an extension of time and also to change the existing sales and repair area into a convenience store. There is a small wedge piece that's being extended, the building's being extended on one side, that is within the yard setbacks. There is, the owner changed a couple years, it would last a number of years, and so he's trying to bring it all up in compliance. And so, we are before you. We are, that's basically it. There's no change in the canopy, just in the building. We are proposing some more planting area and...
Okay. Do you have any questions? On the... Okay, I appreciate if you could say, remember, we have one person to testify. If you have any questions, I'd appreciate if you answered them after, okay?
Yes.
We call upon Walter Sanchez, Community Board Five Land Use.
Good morning, everyone. Our President, Katz. My name's Walter Sanchez. I'm the land use chairman for, so I'm the land use for Community Board Five. And we don't only come here when we're against something. We come here when the people are good neighbors and they're asking for something to be able to put a convenience store and expand a bit. They've been great neighbors, so we're here to say, to support their application. In fact, we thought one of the conditions might be from the neighbors that they shouldn't park commercial vehicles there. And actually, the neighbors would rather they park their commercial vehicles there than take away some parking spots on the street or things like that. The only condition we really have is that we want to make sure that any lit signs are not facing the community houses right behind it. But they've been good neighbors. We think that they'll adhere to their requests, so we're here to support it.
We appreciate that. It's always great to hear from the community board at these hearings, and I thank you for your time. Anybody else? Having seen, having no other speakers, the item is closed.
Calendar item number two. BSA number one nine four nine seven BZ. The applicant Sheldon Lobel PC. Affecting community board number eight.
Can I make the assumption that most are here for items four and five? Most folks? 82nd Street rezoning? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll have someone back there in there.
Good morning. Phan Baton from Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. And I also left some handouts on the table there with a quick summary as well. So, I'm here for Quick Stop Auto Repair, which is located at 84-12 164th Street, which is lot 9729, lot 31. This is an extension of term for basically a used variance. BSA has had jurisdiction over the site since 1953. So, this is an extension of term for 10 years for an automotive service station with approximately 2,293 square feet of floor area, which includes an office, storage, and three service bays. The BSA approved plans in 2009 that expired in 2017 show a one-story building with a three-bay garage, libitorium, and office storage room and bathrooms. And there was landscaping requirement of four-foot evergreen trees. It's exactly the same today as the picture show on the back of the handout as well and in the application. There's no changes proposed, just continue operation. Business operates 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and is closed on Sunday. And the community board has been extremely receptive. Before, it's a local business supported by the community.
Can I just have this door be closed? There were prior BSA conditions, I guess on your prior applications. I assume that they'll all be met again?
Yes. Hours of operation remain the same, but landscaping remains the same.
No body, federal work on premises?
No. It's just the automotive service station.
Anybody to testify? The item is closed.
All right. Thank you.
Calendar item number three. BSA number two zero one eight dash one BZ. The applicant Fox Rothschild LLC. Affecting community board number one.
Good morning. I had a PowerPoint, but it's really the same materials that you have there in front of you, so it's fine to not pull it up. My name is Elizabeth Bennett. I'm a land use attorney at Fox Rothschild, and I'm here with my colleague Jari Johnson, and Danielle Mohammed from Philip Habib's Associate, and Bob Bishop from Pitta Bishop and Del Giorno are also here. We're here on behalf of the Black Car Fund. And as you may know, the Black Car Fund is a not-for-profit which was statutorily created by the state of New York to provide workers' insurance, workers' compensation insurance, and safety training for black car drivers and for hire drivers in New York State. And by participating in the safety and wellness programs that the Black Car Fund offers, these drivers fulfill requirements of their New York City taxi and limousine licensing requirements and also become eligible for insurance discounts, bonuses, and reductions in DMV points. The Black Car Fund is seeking a special permit from the Board of Standards and Appeals to reduce the parking requirements at its proposed building at 1102 37th Avenue in Long Island City. And since you originally received a copy of the application, we've received a notice of comments from the Board of Standards and Appeals, and we're in the process of revising the application slightly to respond to that and to further improve the application. We should be submitting that shortly to BSA, and of course, we'll send you a copy. The proposed building will be located on a 7,500-square-foot corner lot with 75 feet of frontage on 37th Avenue and 100 feet of frontage on 11th Street. And it will house the Black Car Fund's used group 6B offices and the Safety Center, which provides the training classes for the for-hire drivers. The offices operate from 9:00 to 5:00 on weekdays, and the Safety Center will hold training sessions on Wednesdays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM and two eight-hour sessions on Saturdays and Sundays. The proposed building, it will be five stories tall and have approximately 32,600 square feet of floor area, which equates to about 4.35 FAR, which is less than the maximum permitted FAR of five for the M1 rezoning district. The building complies with all zoning requirements with the exception of the parking reduction that's requested here. The parking reduction seeks to reduce the required parking from 109 parking spaces to 55 parking spaces. And there will also be four reservoir spaces in addition to those 55 parking spaces. And there was an environmental assessment statement completed with the application which confirmed that there are no significant impacts posed by the proposed facility. And it conservatively projected that there would be a peak demand of 27 parking spaces on weekdays and 50 parking spaces on Wednesdays and weekends when classes are in session. So, during a typical weekday, there will be at least 28 parking spaces open and unoccupied in the facility. And when they're at their peak demand during the classes, there will be at least five parking spaces that are unused and unoccupied in addition to the four reservoir spaces. And the EAS, just to note, was very conservatively analyzed and assumed full attendance of all employees every day, whereas typically, there's actually a 5% to 10% absentee rate, and also assumed that the safety classes would be fully occupied with a maximum of 32 students, whereas typically, there's actually between 20 to 25 people that attend those classes. So, it was very conservatively determined that even with these assumptions, there would be at least five spaces available during peak demand. In order to grant this special permit, the BSA has to find that the occupancy is contemplated in good faith, where here that is an issue because the Black Car Fund is the owner and will be the owner and operator of this facility and will house their offices there. And also that the, any potential disadvantages are outweighed by the benefits to the community. And we feel that this proposal satisfies the findings and provides a meaningful service to for-hire drivers in this community. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, clearly, the community board's main issue was the parking, right?
Correct.
How much parking would be required if you did not come for this application?
So, the as-of-right parking requirement is 109 spaces. It's a requirement for one space for every 300 square feet. And the special permit allows you to reduce to one space for every 600 square feet, which would be 54 here, but we are proposing 55. And since the time of the community board, we did increase the number of proposed parking spaces by three parking spaces. We also hired a parking consultant to make sure that the ingress would be accommodated without any queuing issues, which we have confirmed. And we feel that because we have, we're able to meet the demand just within the parking facility itself, we really feel that this special permit reduction is appropriate here.
Did you have any studies come or anything that backs up the film?
Yes. The environmental assessment statement included a full parking study, including the availability of on-street parking. So, even in addition to the five parking spaces that are available during the absolute peak demand times, the parking analysis did find that there were parking spaces available on-street as well.
And if you were not given this variance?
Unfortunately, it wouldn't be feasible to develop the building here because it really requires the parking reduction because there are somewhat high water table. So, we cannot include a substantial cellar that would be able to accommodate additional parking.
Yeah. One of the community board's suggestions was to design buildings on a block. It would be a plan to have a mezzanine level. That has to be extra block spaces.
Well, part of the reason why the mezzanine is open to below is because of the fact that the parking goes up to 22 and 1/2 feet. But in addition to that, it wouldn't be feasible to provide, the site isn't large enough to provide ramps that would give access to it. And it would be infeasible to, you know, from a house perspective, to include a parking elevator.
How were you able to add these?
So, we, the parking consultant, worked together with the architects to reconfigure the layout of the parking and added a stacker where there was previously a reservoir space. And was actually able to still add additional reservoir spaces. So, they, you know, added essentially one stacker, which equated to three additional spaces.
So, what was the prior reservoir space before this configuration?
It was, would you like me to show it to you on the plans?
You can just tell me. You were saying that you added one stacker to make your reservoir space. What was the number of reservoir spaces prior to adding the stacker? What's the number of reservoirs?
Sure. There were actually two reservoir spaces. Previously, now there's four, and that's because of the reconfiguration of the spaces that the parking consultant assisted the architect with making. So, we've increased the number of parking spaces by three and also increased the number of reservoir spaces.
Okay. So, four reservoir spaces in your lot is not that big of a lot. So, is there any possibility that you have some of that?
No. So, the parking consultant analyzed the maximum ingress that would happen based on the parking and traffic study included in the EAS. And the maximum, the absolute maximum ingress was 23 cars in one hour. But we will be having two parking consultants, I mean parking attendants, working the facility, which gives them ample time to park all of the cars without any queuing issues. Additionally, the parking consultant came up with a plan to essentially keep the 19-grade level parking spaces open during these peak ingress times so that cars can be pulled directly into the spaces. And then later, when the, you know, there isn't a peak ingress time happening, they would rearrange the cars onto stackers and face them outward for quick ingress.
And what are the hours of the classes?
So, the classes on Wednesdays are held from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the classes on Saturdays and Sundays are eight-hour classes. And one would begin at 9:00 AM, and the other would begin at 10:00 AM. And the reason for the staggering of the classes actually was one of the recommendations of the parking consultant to further make the ingress smoother and not create any queuing issues.
Well, there are classes Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
No. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, there are no classes, and it's just the general insurance office workers that will be at the facility. And during those days, the peak parking demand is 27 spaces. So, there will be 28 spaces that will be unoccupied in the facility on those days.
And finally, what would be the worst?
The parking will be used by office employees. Of course, we did a survey to determine the parking demand and, you know, who takes subway to work, who takes, who will take their car. And of course, not all of them take cars to work. So, the employees. And then during the classes, the parking will be open to the attendees of classes.
So, does it first come for serve or is there a charge?
There won't be a charge.
It'll be fully attended with a lot of attendants?
Yes. Yes, with two attendants. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, for the next item, Mia Ambarito is, works in the office, and she will, she'll present her there for folks. I know that there are other interpreters that are here, but Ambarito will be the middle ground on interpreting and hearing from the office so that it's, she knows a lot of land use and items that, and terms that are not here. So, I'd like to...
Calendar items number four and number five are related items. ULC number 180098 CMQ. ULC number 180099 CRQ. Affecting community board number four.
Good morning. With the application, if you can also not only go over the project, ours, we could appreciate, but also go over some of the accommodations that I understand I have been working on for the last few weeks with our office, with the councilman. It would be helpful also as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our President Katz. My name is Nora Martins from Akerman LLP. We're land use counsel for this. We're ladies counsel for this application, presenting the ladies' application for the 82nd Street rezoning. As you can see from the area map, the site is located at the corner of...
We should pull this out so folks can see it.
The site's located at the corner of Baxter, Ithaca, and 82nd Streets, just south of Roosevelt Avenue in Queens Community District 4. It's in Elmhurst neighborhood, just south of Jackson Heights. The lot is approximately 23,428 square feet in lot area, occupied by a former movie theater and one-story stores. It's currently vacant. Located within an existing R6 zoning district with a C1-3 commercial overlay. As you can see from the area map and just, I think, probably very familiar with this neighborhood, it's a true mixed-use neighborhood with a strong commercial character along 82nd Street and Roosevelt Avenue, but also very dense residential development. You have the, again, the 82nd Street commercial corridor. The site is actually part of the Business Improvement District there. And then you have Elmhurst Hospital just to the south, which is about 11 stories, 180 feet, substantially sized building. The proposed zoning actions that we are seeking approval of are rezoning from the R6 C1-3 to a C4 5X zoning district, which is an R7X residential equivalent. We're also seeking, in connection with the rezoning, a zoning text amendment for mandatory inclusionary housing designation, which would be option one plus the deep affordability option. The existing R6 zoning district, there is no inclusionary housing area map, so there is no affordable housing required in order to build residential. Permits a 4.8 FAR for community facility, a 2 FAR for commercial, and a 2.43 height factor for residential. Again, height factor is permitted in the existing R6, so there is no maximum height limit as you would have in a contextual zoning district. This site planning context just shows our location. Real transit-oriented development. We have the seven train located just north at 82nd Street and Roosevelt. And then the M and the R at Elmhurst Avenue Station are just a few blocks away. The proposed C4 5X, again, the R7X equivalent, would permit additional residential density above what's permitted in the existing zoning, as well as two stories of commercial below the residential, which in the R6 C1-3, while you could build two stories of commercial, you can't then build residential above, given the location of use restrictions in the C1-3. The two stories of commercial development is very consistent with what you see on 82nd Street, which is really typified by that two-story commercial use. So the proposed building would rise up two stories of commercial, then step back with residential. The total development would be 13 stories with a maximum height of 145 feet. We would also, I think, mapping the mandatory inclusionary housing district, the first one to be mapped in Community District 4, there is actually no inclusionary housing or mandatory inclusionary housing areas in this community district. So this is a real opportunity where you have a vacant site. The C4 5X permits a 5 FAR for community facility, a 4 FAR for commercial, and a 6 FAR for residential with a total of six overall. The proposed development is 140,000, just over 140,000 square feet of zoning floor area, so 5.99 FAR, with 99,000 square feet of residential on floors 3 through 13 above the commercial. We approximately 120 units. More than half of those units, about 55%, are two and three bedrooms. The breakdown now, as we are approximating it, is 14 studios, 12%. 45 one-bedroom, 38%. 43 two-bedrooms, 36%. And 18 three-bedrooms, 15% of the overall units are three bedrooms. The lower two stories in the cellar contain commercial use with 128 parking spaces located in the sub-seller. Parking and loading access is on Baxter Avenue. The curb cuts there were approved by the Department of Transportation. And then lastly, on the first floor, there is also a 2,000-square-foot dedicated community facility space. Unlike in other zoning districts, we don't need the community facility floor in order to maximize the development on the site. It's provided solely as a community benefit, and it would be proposed to be used by a local community-based organization to help administer services to the local community. That is one of the commitments that we've discussed with the community board and also with your office and the council member. Some of the most important discussions we've had, I think, at the community board, with your office, and with the council member, relate to the affordability levels of this project. We listened to everything everyone had to say. We took another look. And I think we've come up with something that really reflects what this community needs. So instead of the option one, option two, which we were initially proposing, which requires 30% of your floor area affordable up to 80% AMI, an average of 80% AMI, we're going to propose the deep affordability option, which is 20% of floor area permanently affordable at 40% AMI. That's 24 units. Just for reference, Community District 4's average household AMI is 44,865. And 40% AMI for a family of four is 41,720. So this would be affordable to families of four earning 41,720 a year combined. And 40% AMI rents range from $524 for a studio to $929 for a three-bedroom, just for a reference. Then beyond complying with the deep affordability option, we would propose an additional 15% of the floor area. So 35% overall of all the residential development would be affordable. That would be another 18 units with 5% at 50 AMI, 5% at 60 AMI, and 5% at 80 AMI. We're committed to using a local administering agent to ensure as much of this affordable housing as possible goes to local residents. And we're working with the council member and other community stakeholders, including your office, to find that right nonprofit organization that can really help the community here. In conclusion, requested rezoning and MIH text amendment will facilitate a new mixed-use development that will include 35%, 42 units of affordable housing for low-income families, for very low and low-income families, which is really a rare opportunity here in this community district where there is no, currently no requirement on any of these sites to provide affordable housing. Over 200 local retail jobs, good-paying 32 BJ service workers' jobs, and a community facility space that would be occupied by a local CBM.
Say that once more.
And a community facility space that would be occupied by a local community-based That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions.
So you talked about deeper affordability than originally planned. You're going through option three, right?
Yeah.
So three to the council member, that's 5% of the units or 6% will be for residents making 50% AMI. 40% will be, some of them will also be put aside for 40%. And so the mean income of the building will be 31,000? Is that about right?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, can you talk a little bit about the height? So you're talking about 145 feet, 13 stories. As-of-right, how tall could the building be?
As-of-right under the height factor zoning, you could go up to about 10 stories, 113 feet or so, to utilize the floor area. That would, that's how it would work out for the height.
So it's a three-floor difference?
Essentially.
I'm just trying to put this...
Essentially. When you're looking at the maximum development scenarios for both, yes.
Okay. And we're not doing anything with parking?
No, the parking is all provided as...
Parking is all done as-of-right. The community facilities, 2,000 square feet, will work out what's going to be in the future there and which community group we're going to be working with. Now, my understanding at the community board is that the Target became quite the issue. My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that Target's going to be Target Express, right? Whatever, like the one on Austin Street, the smaller version of a Target?
Yes. Yes, I think they don't brand them Target Express anymore. That was the old name, but they just call them all Target, but it's a small format store.
Oh, so, yeah.
I know. I just learned this myself. So, yeah, they're about 20,000 square feet, which is much smaller than a standard Target format.
Okay. Is it true, is my understanding correct, that the Target that is planned on being there would be able to go there as-of-right?
Yeah.
So if you did not get anything here today, if there was no application, if you did not go to the council, the Target would still be allowed there in the present zoning?
Yes, that's correct.
And this lowers the amount of commercial allowed there in this application?
It doesn't lower it. We're actually proposing lower than you could build as-of-right.
Okay. All right. Questions?
Yeah. In terms of the parking, does it need a similar Target here, like, do people work on that kind of thing from just parking?
I think they will have some convenience services, but it's not going to be like some of the bigger Targets you see that has a full grocery section.
And are they definitely going to have a tenant's green card?
Yes, Target will definitely be one of the tenants.
And were there other configurations of the building looked at to try to accomplish the same floor area affordability, that kind of thing?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Were there other explorations in terms of architectural structure in this building to accommodate program that you have and affordability? Are you saying that you can't do this without these zoning?
Yes, because we need, in order to do any residential above two stories of commercial, we require the higher-density commercial district. So basically, as-of-right, you could either build one story of commercial, then community facility, then residential above. Or if you wanted to build two stories of commercial, which is the standard development along 82nd, you actually wouldn't be able to build any residential above. So this rezoning is to increase the residential density, which basically the delta in the increase is all being provided as affordable housing, and then to allow the two stories of commercial.
And also concerns were raised about the traffic. Do you include about the loading, unloading detail?
Sure. So the curb cuts for the loading burst and for the parking access are located on Baxter. The environmental consultant for the project, while the proposed development didn't trigger any detailed traffic study as part of the environmental review, given the relatively small incremental difference between the as-of-right and the proposed scenario for environmental review purposes, they did prepare a detailed memo and did traffic counts for DOT to approve the curb cuts at that location, which determined that Baxter is relatively low-traffic street and that the parking and loading entrances there would not create adverse impact on existing traffic conditions.
So there'll be no loading on the street?
No, the loading bursts are located in the building.
And they will be able to accommodate all the trucks that need to service this facility?
That's how the building was designed, was, in order to accommodate the amount of commercial square footage.
And in terms of the parking, what does then to the parking, instead of like, commercial activity?
That question I actually would have to get back to you on. I'm not sure exactly what the breakdown is there.
I assume that you are sticking around so that any questions that come up during the testimony, you can answer at the end of the hearing?
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. Please, can you just be seated to listen to the rest of the testimony? That'd be great while we call it books. I think we'd like to start with the opposition.
Thank you.
Two minutes. I will tell everybody that we have, just so everybody knows, 31 people here to testify. 19 are testifying for, 12 are testifying against. We're going to ask that you keep it to two minutes if possible. Again, saying "me too" is okay in this case. And so we're going to start with Tanya Matos, Queens Neighborhood United, which is speaking against the project. And then, just so everybody knows, we go back and forth, right? So Thomas Gretch is going to speak first for the project, then Mayel Rosendo is next against.
Hi. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, President. My name is Tanya Matos. I'm a community resident of Jackson Heights, Corona, for 30 years. I am a daughter of a 32 BJ member, actually. And I'm voting no against this rezoning. And I encourage you to vote no against this rezoning. I will see my community completely displaced if this rezoning happens. I have over about 300 petitions and another online petition, another 300 that have come in, of residents from the community that do not want, in total, 600 people that we've reached out to, and they do not want this rezoning to happen in this community. In addition, we have 15 business owners from 82nd Street, the place where the rezoning is going to happen, who do not want this rezoning. I'm talking to you and as well to President Katz. They don't want this rezoning at all. And again, if there is a Target, we are going to boycott that Target, and no one is going to go into that Target. I understand the developers here have the right to put in whatever they want. I know you're making somewhat adjustments to what your proposal is, but we are not going to shop in that community because they will displace a lot of the business owners that are on 82nd Street. So voting yes for this proposal, for this rezoning, means a displacement and a continuing gentrification of our community that we so much, so much respect and adore, and we want to maintain it for our community. We encourage small business owners. We don't encourage corporate minimum wage pay, right? That's not what we encourage. So I want to hand this to you, President Katz, with most of the petitions, but we have plenty more, and we will be out there every weekend.
We're not starting yet. This is a hearing. Everybody's going to speak. There's going to be some fiery speeches, some not-so-fire speeches. And we want to just respect everyone's right to say their piece. Just a very good question. Is the Target the main opposition?
No, it's the rezoning.
Or is it the rezoning? You need to speak into the mic so everybody gets to have...
Sure. It's the rezoning. One, because it will be one of the, if not the tallest building in all of the area in Jackson Heights. Also, we have concerns about the hospital, about how much traffic it will produce. We also have lots of other ideas of what the space can be. We have a lot of parents here from the school right around the corner who will testify and talk about how their children are, the school is so overpopulated, how we would want something else in the space rather than a Target. How many more Targets do we need in the city? They're the new Walmart.
Okay, but again, again, I understand the Target issue. I'm asking, though, with the affordable housing that's really deep in affordability here and that for units for folks to live, 50% of which is put aside for the community board. So if, like, let's just give an example, if the Department of Education worked with us to create seats, like it should anyway, by the way, and we worked on all of that, is it really the business aspect and the height of the building that's the issue?
It's all of that. It's all of that. And we would, we have a lot of questions about the new housing proposal as well.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time. We want to hear from Tom, I guess, Tom Gretch, Queens Chamber, and then Annabelle Rosendo, then we're going to ask Bishop Taylor, and then Maria Velazquez, and then Hannah Bernbaum. Is that the, that's 32 BJ, Hannah Bernbaum, right? And then we go from there.
Good morning, Borough President Katz and staff of the Borough President and assembled participants. My name is Tom Gretch. I'm the president and CEO of the Queens Chamber of Commerce. We've been around for 107 years, and we have seen a lot over the last 107 years. The resurgence in many ways of Queens as a place that folks used to travel through and now travel to is paramount, as well as the jobs that this project's going to create. From our back and forth with the folks involved, over 200 retail jobs in an environment when retail is under assault in many parts of the country for lots of different reasons. But we support this project based upon the inclusionary housing and also some of the folks that are going to be involved in some of the retail portions of the project, as well as the community space being offered, which we would love to be able to offer some guidance and some support to. That's my statement.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Under one...
We try our best.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Annabelle Rosendo, against the project? If anybody has any children that, I have a lot of toys for my kids. I'd be happy to bring some out, or you can go into my office if you want.
We need translation, actually.
Right, so Annabelle is going to translate. You can also translate what I just said in case you'd like to partake. There's Thomas trucks in there, there's trains, there's tracks. Okay, it's up to you.
Buenos dias.
How have you kissed in the house?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Annabel Rosendo, y yo vengo de la escuela PS 89. Yo tengo dos niñas ahí, y la verdad, yo estoy en contra de que se haga un proyecto tan grande en nuestra zona porque, por ejemplo, que así hay bastantes niños ahí. Me costó mucho trabajo colocar a mi primer niña. Y por ahora me doy cuenta que si ese proyecto es tan grande como lo ponen, va a haber muchos niños más. Esa escuela está llena, y muchos nos quejamos porque nuestros hijos tienen... unos tienen un taller y otros no tienen, y decimos, ¿por qué? Nos dicen, es que hay tantos niños que no alcanza para tener para todos. Por lo tanto, ponen a unas clases con música, a otras con arte, y la verdad, muchos de los niños quisieran tener la misma. Yo estoy en la escuela, voy siempre a las reuniones como madre. No puedo estar en ella por mi chiquito, sin embargo, siempre estoy en las reuniones tratando de entender qué es lo que está pasando y cómo es que podríamos ayudar. Ahora, nos platican de ese proyecto tan grande, y también me preocupa la renta porque a mí me van subiendo cada dos años 100 dólares. A mí me costó mucho trabajo estar en donde estoy ahora. Pasé casi seis meses buscando dónde ir a vivir porque me pedían muchos papeles para entrar, y nos pedían también tener un buen crédito, cosa que en mi casa, pues, no lo hay, pues nada más mi esposo trabaja. El hospital también, es un hospital que está muy lleno, y yo ahí me la vivo con tantas enfermedades. Y pides una cita, tienes que llamar tres meses antes o hasta cuatro, y a veces llega a mi cita y me la cancela. Es muy difícil estar en un lugar así. A mí me gustaría saber si en ese lugar no pudieran hacer, no sé, áreas para uno.
So my understanding is the project is too big, right?
In her words, she is a parent at PS 89 who has two children, and the school is already overburdened. What she wants is that instead of the rezoning, which would add four more floors to what they already have proposed, that it's going to affect the schools and overburden them even more, especially because they don't have enough funds for all the different programs like art and music, that a lot of the kids aren't able to go into these programs because of how overburdened the school is. And she's talking about how when she has to go to the hospital, she needs to make three months in advance for an appointment because that's how overpopulated the community already is. And if the building is to be rezoned, it would just worsen all those issues for the school, for the hospital, as well as her rent. She spoke about how her rent keeps going up every two years and how it's so hard for her to find affordable rent. And the current application, regardless of how affordable it is to them, it's not affordable to her.
Well, I appreciate that. I wanted to show off my understanding what she said, but that's all right. I appreciate it very much. And thank you for your time. Thank you for taking time out with your son to be here today because I do know how difficult that is, and I appreciate the fact that you did that. And he's very well behaved. He's not like my children, so...
She said that she goes to a lot of the PTA meetings at PS 89 and how he's very well behaved in those meetings.
Good, maybe he could teach my kids. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much for your time. Bishop Mitchell Taylor.
Thank you, Borough President.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Bishop Mitchell Taylor. I am the founder and CEO of Urban Upbound, a citywide nonprofit that works with residents that live in public housing, breaking cycles of poverty by giving them the tools and resources for economic mobility and self-sufficiency. I am also the vice president of Impact Mobilizing Pastors in Communities, 500 churches from Brooklyn to Buffalo, and 50,000 members. I have several, and I also want to say that I was personally, professionally engaged to help the project and organize local community support for this initiative. I have several letters from Impact pastors, five of which are Latino pastors. I have a lot of my Latino sisters here and brothers here that will testify after me, that are part of these churches that live in Jackson Heights, live in Corona, live in East Elmhurst. Urban Upbound has an office in East Elmhurst at First Baptist Church of East Elmhurst. Reverend Patrick Young would have been here today, but his mother died, and he's flying to California. But he sends his regards and his support for this project by way of a letter. Also, Reverend Edgar Vincis from Corona, from the Central Christiana Judah Church. Reverend Gilbert Pickett, who's the moderator for Eastern Baptist Association in Corona, sends his support. Reverend Bishop Sheldon Ferguson from the Mount Olivet Gospel Church, also in the district, has members that live in this area, and many more. But let me just read this letter from our president, from Impact, Reverend Johnny Green. He says, "Dear Borough President Katz and Councilmember Moya, I write this letter on behalf of Impact Mobilizing Pastors in Communities. Impact is made from 500 churches from New York City to Buffalo with 50,000 members in the state, and we are in support of the above referenced rezoning, which seeks to change from an R6C13 zoning district to a C45X zoning district and designation of a mandatory inclusion housing." Blah, blah, blah. 120 units are going to be... Thank you so much, opposition. 120 units with 35%, or approximately 42 of which will be permanently affordable. The reason why this project, the reason why this... And I'm speaking for about 10 people to cut down, you know, the testimony. The reason why this project, that I got involved with this project, is because, number one, there's only 1.6% buildable space for affordable housing in this neighborhood. Number two, it's going to be, there's going to be jobs...
I'm going to ask this if I can. I appreciate it, but there's 30 people here, 35 people to testify. Can you give me the letters that the pastors have given you? I appreciate it very much. So the need for affordable housing in the area, I know, is great. And you've come across that in your position as Upbound.
Yes, and I spent six hours on 82nd Street on yesterday, and I'm quite surprised that the business owners I spoke to all seem to be in favor of this project. There were some mixed feelings on the retail space, but there's a lot of favorability with the housing because people are living on top of each other in this neighborhood.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I am sorry to cut people off. It's been, it's going to be a long hearing, and we appreciate everyone's testimony. You can always give me the testimony as well as you're speaking so that it becomes part of the record, and I would appreciate having that also. So even if you can't do your full testimony, if you give it to me, I would appreciate that as well. Before you speak, I just want to make clear that Councilman Moya did send a letter of support, and I just wanted to make sure folks knew that. He was talking about the arrangement for the deeper affordability in the housing and also clearly the agreement with 32BJ. And I just wanted to make sure that that was also known from Francisco Moya. Please.
Hi, good morning.
And this is Hannah...
No, Maria Velasquez.
Maria Velasquez.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm yours. I got it.
Good morning. Yes, I'm a parent and a resident of PS 89. And I'm concerned also that in our school, we are so overcrowded already, and we don't have a gym. We have a minimum of gym everywhere of all schools around Queens. And with coming with all of this, with the new housing, I know it's going to be affordable as it's been said. We don't know yet, but it's really much of a concern that we need a gym in our school. So how can this help the community? That's one of my questions. Is this a beneficial to our community?
In this hearing, normally I ask the questions. But let me just say this. What I'm hearing is the constant drumroll for new, like, school facilities, more space for the schools. And I know that that's the case, whether this project was up or not. This might add to it, but I'm not saying it won't. I'm just saying that in general, though, I would like to, after the meeting, really follow up on the idea that we do need to be in contact with the SCA. I really appreciate folks coming and test... This is not on her time. This is on my time, right? You know, I really appreciate folks coming to testify, especially the parents, on the school issue because sometimes things like this bring those issues to the forefront. And I think that's a really important part of today as well, that I don't want to let the day go by without acknowledging that. And so I appreciate that also. And we will follow... Hopefully, everybody gave us their email when they came here because I would like to follow up on this issue. Right. There's a school construction authority that builds schools, but also tries to figure out how space can be better utilized in present schools. And so whatever happens here with this project, I do think it's something that we should be following up on as well.
It is going to be affecting schools because if the community is going to be growing up more, where are we going to put all these kids now? If it's already overcrowded, we have 1,952 students in this school. How is that going to be affecting our overpopulated schools already?
I appreciate it. All right. Can you... You said your name already, just say what you got for the record.
Yeah, Maria Velasquez. And I'm not the only parent that is here from PS 89 concerned about the gym, that we don't have a space for a gym. So how is this going to affect more? It is very overcrowded. Like, definitely, we need people coming in to check that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We now have Hannah... Hannah from 32BJ, please. Really?
Yeah. Really bad. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Hannah Bernbaum. I work on new development at 32BJ SCIU. And many of our Queens members came out today to support this project, and you'll hear from a few of them in a moment. But I also wanted to say a few words on behalf of our entire union about this project. We're here today because this developer has been really proactive about ensuring good jobs at the project. We also know that it's going to create affordable housing for families in a neighborhood where many of our members live and work. We know this developer to be a responsible employer. We have a history with them. And we really are confident in their commitment to creating good jobs and affordable housing at this project. So we strongly support it. Just wanted to come and share that message on behalf of our institution, and we hope that you will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have more speakers for than against. So I think what I'd like to do is do, so that we don't end up with everyone who's for it at the end of the hearing, you know, to end up that way, to try and inter-try and more speak... I'm going to try to put a few for and then against so that we don't end up at the end of the hearing with just people speaking for to try and equalize it out. Do you have another 32BJ speaker? Panos? Okay? Panos? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Panos Koutris. I'm also a member of 32BJ SCIU. I live in Queens, and I'm here to help our union support for good jobs in this neighborhood and also affordable housing. 32BJ SCIU is the largest property service worker union in the country. In New York City, our union's roots go back only 100 years. Over the decades, we have united cleaners, apartment building workers, and security officers into one district with 80,000 members. Many of our members who work in buildings like the one Sun Equity is proposing to develop at 4031 82nd Street. Our union wants building service workers to be able to live in the communities where they work. Sun Equity has made a commitment to provide good jobs and affordable housing at this site. That is why we urge the Borough President to support this project. These jobs will allow workers at 4031 82nd Street to continue to call New York home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Jay Ku, Queens Neighborhoods United.
Hello. I just want to say that I want to present a letter to Borough President Moya in Chinese. Bishop Taylor stated that he's been organizing six hours in the small businesses. Queens Neighborhood United has been organizing more than six months talking to small businesses. And we can all say and validate with a signed letter from the small businesses that they do not want this project. None of the Chinese small businesses who own 99 Cent Store have been there for more than eight years. They are breadwinners for multiple families. They pay better wages, and their products are better than Target, and they sell competitive products to Target. They know they'll be pushed out. And also, as you can see in the letter that my comrade and colleague, Tanya, has presented, not only do we get endorsement, not from the small businesses, we have endorsement from the Justice for All Coalition, who have been building, organizing, and regulars with houses, Queens Borough Houses, and Astoria Houses. And they too have stand against the project because they know that gentrification in Jackson Heights will displace not only the members there, but displace all working-class community members all across the borough of Queens. I'm a resident of the Lower East Side. I came here because I was displaced on the Lower East Side. I have seen what big corporate America have done to my community. At 32BJ, when X is crossing, one of the largest development in the Lower East Side came aboard, none of the jobs were given to 32BJ. When the Walker Brothers decided to make a promise to Jimmy Van Bremmer to develop housing by demolishing Five Points, none of the jobs were given to the union. Take that with consideration. Let's learn from our past. Let's unite. Because if they displace us here, they displace us anywhere. A community that organizes together stays together. So the endorsements are offers of a zoned-out book, Race Displacement City Plan, New York City, from offers like Tom McGotti, Sam Stein, the Justice for All Coalition, the Korean American for Political Advancement, the Long Island City Coalition, People's Cultural Plan, Social Practice Queens, the Queens Branch of the Democratic Socialists of America, the Queens Chapter of the People Power Assembly, and the Queens Borough Housing Association that represent over 85 pre-war co-op, all stand against this project, representing over 1,000 constituents in Queens. Thank you.
Again, I'm trying to just get details for the record. So is it the idea of Target? Is it the idea of housing in general there? Is it the affordability, deepness?
Both. As you voted against the MIH project in the past, Ms. Katz, this proposal and policy of MIH does not guarantee deeper affordability for community members that are deeply in need. So they are worried about the MIH project. A lot of these organizations have had, they spoke with different planners, different think tanks, different members of different perspective, and feel that the MIH does not do much for communities that need it. And also, they're against the Target because they have seen Target and other neighborhoods displacing small businesses. And they all know that small businesses have supported them in time of need. I know that you came from humble beginnings and that you were supported by a single father, and you shared that small businesses were champions of your lifetime because when times were tough, mama pop shop would definitely put a little eggs or two just to make sure that your family is well-fed. These are families that depend on their small business. Small businesses have an ecosystem of supporting the community members way beyond the corporate retail stores. That is what a community looks like.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. And again, I want to thank, I know folks are coming and going, but thank everyone for being here on a workday in the middle of the day for this length of time. I know you're giving up to be here, and I appreciate it. We want to welcome Mordus Saldaña. Mordus?
Mordus Saldaña.
She's outside.
Correct.
Muy buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Nelly Campoverde. Yes, thank you.
Was that what you were asking? I'm sorry.
No.
I thought you were saying that wasn't it?
Okay. Yo estoy acá apoyando el proyecto de las nuevas viviendas porque realmente todas las construcciones de las casas están deterioradas, acabadas. Y así como también hay vivienda de salud, hay vivienda de escuelas y todo, pero también queremos de lugares dignos para poder vivir mejor.
She's supporting the project because she feels that the community needs a revamping. The housing has been deteriorating, and there is need for affordable housing in the area as well.
Las mayorías de las casas de las construcciones están llenas ya, acabadas con carachas, ratones, y todo. Entonces yo pienso que si se da un nuevo proyecto de vivienda, van a haber mejores oportunidades para tener un buen vivir nosotros.
The housing that is available right now is full of rodents, roaches, and it's not good for housing. So she supports that.
Entonces, por eso estamos aquí apoyando para nosotros tener también la oportunidad de tener opción a vivir mejor.
She's supporting it because she liked the opportunity to live better.
You can afford it, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we are next going to ask Desi Monhe. Monhe?
I support the project because I guess that it gives more opportunity of jobs. As you can see, it's rare for people. Like, there's a lot of people that you see that don't have jobs, and they're looking for, and they give more, and they give more opportunity for their friends, family, et cetera. And that it's affordable housing.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you. It's not easy getting up in front of a bunch of folks, right? It's not an easy job.
Especially when you brought in somebody else.
The little comments and stuff, it's not, it just doesn't work. Number one, it's not on the record, which is unfortunate because some of it might be important. Red Seville from the New York Life Church.
Hi, how are you? Great to be here. Good, good. So to my Queens Borough President and members of her office, thank you for allowing stakeholders to come and speak. My name is Red Sevilla. I grew up in Jackson Heights, currently live in El Hurst, and I currently work in El Hurst running New Life CDC, a local nonprofit that serves 4,000 Queens families in a given year. My heart is in the neighborhood where this rezoning is happening. And I also serve on the CB4 Community Board, which is a privilege. So I'm actually one of the members who voted no to this rezoning. I don't speak for the whole board, but I did want to communicate why I voted the way I did as a local stakeholder. So according to the developer's own website, and I just pulled it up straight from their website, the company is committed to an investment strategy that pinpoints underperforming assets. I would never have called my neighborhood on underperforming assets. But the website continues, "The company has attained a track record of consistent substantiation of profits." So bottom line, they were advertising, "Watch us make money." Now, making money is not bad, but if it's at the expense of immigrant families, something's not right, and that's why I'm here. So I wish the website sounded more like yours, actually, where you talked about families and the richness of the diversity and the riches of cultures in Queens. But this development doesn't serve local families, but rather displaces them. But here's what I thought. So the owner does have the right to build this building and charge the rents that they please. And so I was initially going to vote yes at the beginning of the meeting for the rezoning so that it activates MIH. And I thought, at least we can get some affordable units out of this deal. But after reviewing the correspondence from the owners, I changed my mind. Imagine a builder coming in and saying, "Listen, I want to build 120 apartments in your neighborhood, but only 20 will be truly affordable to the people in the direct vicinity." Meaning, it's a building in my neighborhood, but not for my neighbors. So I decided to take a stand because as of right doesn't mean it's right. So here's my hope, just in closing, that your office communicates to the owner what is really needed. A majority, say 70%, of the units priced for families making $40,000 to $50,000 a year. The other units can be priced higher. Neighborhoods need those higher income earners. But these families who make $40,000 to $50,000 are the ones who make up the diversity and the cultural richness of the neighborhood. We need developments that serve them and not displace them. So if this building goes up as planned, the non-affordable units, which is a majority of them, will set off a chain reaction of steep rental increases that will slowly erode the Queens neighborhood that your office boasts about and that we are so very proud of. Thank you.
So we, I want to, no, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I do want to read from the councilman's letter, and I'd like the council to tell me if I'm wrong or right. Where's the council for the development?
Come here, sorry.
Okay, just very quickly. My understanding, just so that we're all on the same track, and that's right or wrong, I just want to know that I'm right. 20% of the housing units, which are 24 of the apartments, will be residents making $31,000 or less with three people in their home. An additional 5% of the units, which is about six apartments, will be for those making $42,900 or less. I'm just trying to...
Yes, I think those numbers might be based on the 2017 instead of 2008. So 2018 is a tiny bit different, but essentially, yes, that is accurate.
Are they different in more affordable or less affordable?
Well, it depends on the family size. What is the, what's the family size?
Three. We're basing this on a family of three.
Three, 40% AMI per family of three, which will be 20% of the units is $37,000.
$37,000, okay. All right, thank you. Just trying to make sure that everybody's on the same track.
The breakdown is accurate, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. We have toys if anybody wants. All right, next we have Gloria C., a local resident from Northern Blue Ridge.
Sí, hallo. Buenos dias con todos los presentes. Bueno, yo aquí estoy apoyando al liderazgo de Jackson Heights principalmente porque hay muchas casas viejas y yo tengo un problema con mi niño, que él es asmático, y por eso es que yo apoyo mucho a este proyecto.
She is for the project because she feels that the housing is very old, and her son is six, so she needs to be born.
Sí, yo apoyo a este proyecto porque, o sea, apoyo a este proyecto para que sea un nuevo, un nuevo pilte y también las rentas más baratas. Y también pienso que va a haber trabajo para mucha gente que necesitamos.
She feels that there's going to be work for everyone and be better housing.
Disculpe, yo escuché aquí que dijo quién le mintió. Mamita, yo para estar aquí, a mí no hay nadie que me pague ni que me traiga. Yo estoy aquí voluntariamente.
She just wants to clarify that she, no one paid her because there was a remark that she heard, and she's here voluntarily.
Yo estoy aquí voluntariamente, como le dije, porque apoyo a este proyecto y por las rentas más baratas. Y también porque yo estoy viviendo en carne propia en una casa, o sea, en una casa vieja, mi hijo tiene asma y pienso que con una vivienda más nueva y será mucho más económico y también la renta muy barata. Gracias.
Her son has asthma, the house is old. She would like new housing, lower affordable housing.
Y también gracias al hospital Elmus porque yo hago atender ahí mi hijo, que él es muy asmático. Yo por ello escuché que dice que no atienden. Eso es mentira porque cuando yo falta los apoyos del hospital está encima de mí. Y eso es todo. Muchas gracias. Que pasen un buen día.
She was just acting El Hurst Hospital because she, her son goes to El Hurst, and she's always seen.
Yes, the project, Elaine Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Traducción, por favor. Okay, primero. I think we need to clarify why overcrowding exists in New York City. There are over three times the amount of vacant, unaffordable units as people experiencing homelessness. The problem isn't space, it's unaffordability. We have to talk about the elephant in the room, and that is the conflict of interest evident throughout this rezoning process. The development corporations directly affiliated with this project are financially connected to the elected officials and organizations pushing the displacement. We cannot pretend that the LLC loophole does not exist in New York State. We cannot pretend that dark money doesn't advocate on the interests of private equity and luxury real estate developers. Councilman Moyes sent a letter. Councilman Moyes wasn't even present at the community board meeting. Neither was a representative of his office.
I'm going to ask, if I can, about the details of the project. If you could go into what you don't like about the particular project, that would be very helpful to this office. It would also be very helpful to my staff to hear some details
Yeah, absolutely.
on the actual project and what's going on.
Sure. So what we have a problem here is that 50% of these units are unaffordable. That means that 50% of the people in the community will not be able to live here or to stay here, which is the core of the problem of displacement. And additionally, the CEO of this group and in this development itself has been connected to this approval process, which on behalf of our community here in Corona and Jackson Heights and these El Hursts is problematic because it causes the community to question the agency that they have in this decision-making process. Are we truly being heard, or is this a performance? And that is a problem that is at the core with our community, just emotionally, financially, in terms of our well-being. When new housing is being built, not for the community, but for someone else, this becomes a problem at the core of our democracy and our economic dignity.
So we appreciate democracy, and that's extremely important. But again, if you could tell us, I really want to know, the issues with this development and where you stand on the deepness of the affordability?
Sure.
And also the, I assume it's the Target also, but...
Right. So one core issue as well is that this development does not allow small businesses to exist or to take up place. So not only are we displacing people, but we are displacing small businesses. Laundry mats aren't allowed here, dollar stores, et cetera. We are not building a home for the entrepreneurs and small business owners that live here. And we are building, I don't think that New York should be building any more unaffordable units. We already have vacancies of 275,000 apartments in New York City with a homelessness, with a homelessness, sorry, population experiencing homelessness of over 75,000 people. We have three times more empty apartments than people without homes. And to be building more homes that will be vacant, to be building more homes not designed for this community is only adding to the affordability crisis in New York City and frankly, in every urban area in the United States.
So having mixed affordable with market value is something that you don't like?
No, yeah, I think 100% of our new units should be affordable.
Oh, yeah, no, we were represented at the community board, no doubt about that. So we actually were at the city planning and the community board hearing, so we were privy to the comments that were made at the community board hearing. Thank you very much. No, no, I appreciate it very much. That's fine, I just didn't know. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. We have next Mr. Bravo. Miss Bravo? Can't tell the first name?
Buenos dias. Estoy aquí para apoyar al proyecto que se va a realizar en Jackson Heights para poder tener unas mejores viviendas y también para tener unos precios económicos por la renta. Gracias.
She's here supporting the project because she would like affordable housing, and she's supporting it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ryan is going to speak on behalf of a councilmember, Mike.
So just because we had submitted the letter, but as was mentioned, we wanted to address it. So I don't know. Go ahead, read it now. You can't hear? This better? I'll just stand close. I'll read it. All right. Thank you for giving the time. I submitted the thing late. So as I'm sure all of you are aware, this project was originally arranged between the developers, Sun Epi Partners, and the Haskell Group with the previous councilmember for District 21, Gilasa Ferreira Cobla. It will house the Target Express, commercial space on the second floor, and then dozens of housing units. Unfortunately, this plan was seemingly arranged with little concern for area residents, local business owners, many of whom are worried, and for good reason, that the retail store will put their businesses at risk. Also overcrowding in schools and traffic surrounding the hospital. Compounding the community's concerns are the influx of market-rate apartments and the specter of gentrification. This project that's originally drafted poses not just a threat to the neighbor's culture, but for the well-being of many of its working-class residents. Over the past few weeks, my office has worked closely with the developers, union workers from 32BJ, and constituents in the district to arrange another deal, one that we believe is more equitable and one that can serve as a blueprint for similar developments in the future. The developers deserve to be lauded for their willingness to come to the table and find common ground with us. And we do want to thank them for their efforts there. Under the new arrangement, as was already discussed, 20% of the housing units, which is 24 apartments, will be for residents making 40% of the average median income. For a family of three, that would be $31,080 per year. An additional 5% of units, and I'm not going to go through it all because it's already...
It's already part of the record, and we appreciate the fact that you stand up and verify everything.
There's just one more point that I want to make, and it's that our support for this is contingent on developers honoring that affordability, those jobs and that affordability.
We appreciate that very much. And the letter also that the councilman wrote is in the record, and I thank you for that very much.
And we will, I know that you also mentioned it, but we will also continue to engage with DOE and DOT to address all these concerns, which are certainly valid.
Thank you very much. So I would like, before everybody, because we're going to go through the other testimony. Laura Martins, where are you? Laura? Can you, the young lady who testified before mentioned the retail. Can you just go through the retail again for me?
Sure. So the proposed retail will be in the cellar and on the first and second floors. It's about 40,000 square feet on the first and second floors, and then another just over 20,000 square feet in the cellar. The target leases for the cellar space. I don't think we have signed agreements for the additional space. I think, you know, to the extent that we can offer new homes to businesses in the area, it would be great.
So how many square feet in all this retail?
Total, it's about 60,000 square feet.
And the target's 20,000?
22,000.
So that is important for the community to know that for the other 38,000 square feet, that there is space available for retail. And these should, any businesses that, I don't know, that could talk to you guys about that.
Right.
But it's the Target plus these other stores of retail, and how they're made up, like in 10,000 square feet increments or 20,000, is not yet settled. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, just thank you. So I'm going to go through, we have, now that I know a lot of you have things to do as well. We have about 15 more testimony or testifiers for the project. We have seven more against the project. So I'm going to say, when I call you, if you'd like to just say, "I'm for the project, and, you know, I agree with the people that testified before me," you can. Otherwise, you're more than welcome to testify. Okay? We just want to leave the option out there. Ernesto from Jackson Heights. Good morning. For the project. Again, we do leave the option of saying yes or no.
Yeah, the thing is, I'm living by myself because my kids have a problem with strep. I do know it's really... it's really, when you go inside the buildings, the old buildings, it's fall apart, the doors, all that kind of stuff is a danger for my kid. So, I talked with the doctor and he told me that the best way they can do it right now is just try to find a new space. So, I'm for with this building because I know it's going to be a new one, the rent is going to be cheaper, the best part, all the transportation here I mean. So, even for the job applicants, everything is going to be fine. Even I do for my kids, that's why I'm for with the project. Thank you everyone.
I appreciate that very much. Nellie, come, Nellie left. She was for the project. Abdul Basher from 32BJ, you don't say for against, but it's real as it from 32BJ. So... No? No? Okay. Let's try another against. From Jackson, from 34th Row, Jackson Heights. Again. Huh? The last name is Orlando. Okay. Orlando Avila, you don't say whether you're for or against.
He's for this project because he feels that they should have an open mind and an open heart for a better future for the children. It's also because he feels that there will be a lot of job opportunities joining this project.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Will Spisak from 77th Street?
Yeah, how are you? Good morning. So, my name is Will Spisak. I'm the director of programs at CHIA Community Development Corporation. We have been providing housing economic development services in the Jackson Heights area for 18 years. So, I should say I've spent more than six hours on that block. We serve about 5,000 tenants, homeowners, and small business owners each year. And for several years, we've actually worked with your office as a member of the Immigration Task Force. And from that experience, I am confident that your office shares our values and vision of Queens remaining affordable and welcoming borough for immigrant families. As an organization that works directly with the impacted communities, I am here to express CHIA's unequivocal opposition to the project. The development will unleash the specter of speculation at an unprecedented level. We have seen projects like this before lead directly to predatory equity or the over-leveraged loans and property speculation. Landlords increasingly use harassment tactics, once these developments go up, to get rid of community members, to displace folks, and to raise rents illegally. The affordable housing component of this project is like putting duct tape on the crack of a levee to hold back the floodwaters. Any cost-benefit analysis to the neighborhood has to consider the significant negative externality on affordability caused by such developments. We cannot afford, in this housing crisis, to take token gestures of affordability or, for that matter, token gestures of community space. A community center is meaningless if you displace the community. So, we really implore you to oppose this project. At CHIA, I have personally signed up hundreds of individuals through HPD's Housing Ambassador Program for these affordable housing units, hundreds of individuals. How many individuals have I seen actually get interviewed for these affordable housing units? Let the record show, only up two fingers. So, anyone here who's testifying that they want to get an affordable housing unit from this project, you're better off just playing the Lotto and trying to buy a home.
So, we're going to do another one against. Jocelyn Atahualpa.
My name's Jocelyn. My family owns the business 97, 18th Roosevelt. Can you guys hear me? Cool. So, I'm just going to read real fast. Everyone keeps looking to affordable housing as this Band-Aid that will fix New York City's housing crisis, but we need to acknowledge that it's not. Today, we've heard so many examples of horrible living conditions. Instead of creating new housing, we should be focusing, we should be fighting to improve what we already have. We should be fighting to keep those that have worked hard to make this community what it is and to keep them here. We have more people living, if we have more people living in this rezoned building, where will they go? Our trains are packed, you have to see many buses go by before you can actually board them. Want me to translate? Yeah. So, la compañera afuera dice que su edificio está mal, que el otro, el señor, ahí, no. Pero como dijo la compañera, no va a haber espacio. Hay como cuánto, 20, 10 apartamentos, pero en realidad va a ser muy difícil para que usted encuentre uno de esos apartamentos que sea a buen precio. Entonces, en realidad, no tiene sentido eso. ¿Dónde más vamos a meternos? Vamos, estamos esperando los buses que pasen, uno y dos, y no podemos ni subirnos. En el tren está súper lleno a las seis. ¿Qué vamos a hacer con toda esta gente? En vez de tener otro target o más edificios que tal vez ni nos van a acopar, deberíamos tener centros comunitarios para nuestros niños y nuestros hijos. Como dijo un compañero que dijo que sus hijos, tenemos que pensar en el futuro y esto. Y en realidad, pensar en el futuro sería ir en contra de esta proposición. Going against this rezoning is thinking about our future, actually. Thank you.
Um, Ladeep Endriga? James Andrade? Andres? Residents? James?
Buenos dias, soy... Buenos dias, soy... Mi nombre es James Andrade. En realidad, necesitamos de este proyecto. No solamente de un proyecto, sino de muchos proyectos. Vivimos, este, deplorables. Sí, muchas veces, ya los apartamentos están, este, obsoletos, no vivimos. Entonces, puede vivir ya casi, por el temor de las, como, de las ratas, de los cucarachos, entonces. Siempre ese mismo problema. Ahora mismo, yo tengo un hijo con autismo. Entonces, este, siempre estoy preocupado por él porque las paredes siempre como vida. El baño está, este, deplorable también, madera, la dueña de la casa dice, hoy sí ya vamos a arreglar, entonces. Pero cuál? Yo trabajo en construcción, yo mismo tengo que arreglar.
He's for the project because he feels that the housing is in deplorable conditions. He has an autistic child and he feels for his health. The walls are wet, he works in construction, and he has to do his own fixing up of the apartment because the landlords will not do it.
Entonces, por eso estoy aquí, este, para hacer un llamado a todos y que nos ayuden. Eso es lo que me interesa también. Muchas gracias.
He's just asking for, but at the beginning, he did mention that it should not be just one, it should be more projects for affordable housing.
Uh, Latisha Ochoa?
Hi, my name is Latisha Ochoa. Thank you for having me here. I see that there's a lot of parents that are for it. I'm against the project and I'm going to just share a quick story. My, I have, I have my first son, he's going to be two. The first time he had a seizure, I was so scared. I called the ambulance because I thought he died, his lips turned purple. Getting to Umpire Hospital, which where he was born and I was like providing services, I couldn't get there because the traffic in Lady's Century, due to double parking, due to everything, because, you know, all the stores are there. I thought my son died in my hands when I saw him, okay? So, bringing this development, bringing 13 floors or more and bringing all these people to this neighborhood, how my son, because he's going to get seizure until the age of seven, okay? The first, like I said, the first time he had it, I thought he died because his lips turned purple, like he wasn't even breathing, he wasn't even moving, he wasn't responding. So, for a person, the first time really going through that experience, like I said, it was horrible. Like, I just got off because the ambulance wasn't coming because apparently this traffic by the Grand Central Parkway. I live in East Almores. Okay, so from East Almores coming over here to Almores, it felt like forever. So, I took a cab, the cab couldn't even go anywhere, like I ran to the hospital. I just got off the cab and ran to the hospital. Another thing, I was working when I was pregnant, I used to work in the city in a law firm. I had to wake up an hour earlier because peak hours on seven train is horrendous. I had a stomach this big, I couldn't get on the train, you know? I didn't even care about sitting, it was just too horrendous to get on the train. So, bringing more people to Jackson Heights where the seven train is already chaotic. It's chaotic, it's all, they're always losing services, something's always happening and stuff like that, it's horrendous. Another story is, I am, I have legal custody of my nephew. He has special needs kids, he goes to District 75 school. He cannot go in the regular school because of the emotional stress that he has and we're working on that. His District 75 school is in Richmond. So, my nephew has to wake up at three o'clock, five o'clock, six o'clock in the morning to get ready to hop on the bus. And if he misses that bus, I have to take three trains to get to his school in Richmond. That's an hour and a half away. So, instead of bringing more, like, the numbers of people, we need more schools, especially the District 75 schools for special needs kids, because the majority of the kids in this community have an IEP. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Tyler Diaz from Perfect City, enjoyed the presentation.
Hello, everybody. First, I want to thank everybody here for coming out to hear everything and specifically thank you for President Melinda Katz. I believe you've shown a lot of humanity today and I think that's extremely helpful for everybody in here. And so, I want to start by saying I'm very much opposed against the rezoning for, for Jackson Heights to allow this building to be built. I think that when we build buildings and when we build spaces in our communities, I think we really need to consider what's best for our community. Are retail jobs best for our community? Some people might say yes because it provides a certain avenue for jobs that a lot of people need. These are dead-end jobs, I've worked those jobs. I've worked in the corporate office of, I've worked in the corporate office for the biggest retail company in the world. I'm here to tell you, it's a lot of corporate money, a lot of minimum wage pay, and a lack of representation of diversity, a lack of representation for the people in the community and the people who are really trying to stand up and just simply live. There are a lot of people out there who are trying to build buildings and build certain hubs for money purposes before the value of a human life, which to me is very upsetting and it shows a lack of humanity. I saw a proposal from Acreman LLP saying that if they do not get approved the rezoning, they will not be building affordable housing. So, everybody who wants the affordable housing, I believe it's something that you should really consider when trying to think about who you're supporting. If there was, if there was true humanity based in what they're trying to do, they would be willing to build as many affordable housing units as possible, not just only affordable housing, if they get the rezoning. Because if they don't, everything's planned to be market rate. So, with that being said, I would actually like to propose, not that it may get passed or voted on or whatever, I would just like to propose something different in that space. I don't like the idea of a Target being there. I've watched it, I've watched it help the neighborhood right next to Queens Boulevard. Sorry, I know my time is up, but I just believe that instead of using spaces for shopping centers and corporations like Target, I think it's more important to target the, no pun intended, to target the specific needs of the community, such as community hubs for people to be, be able to reach out to their representatives for their communities, art centers for our children and our adults, to really, to really continue pushing. And I also want more workforce development for our borough. Thank you very much, I'm sorry I'm out of time.
No, it's all right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. We have Diego Navarro, 32BJ.
He just left.
He just left?
Yeah.
All right. Olivia Lala? Local resident, Roma, Jackson Heights. Okay? Delia Saldaño? Saldaño? Which one? Yeah, I thought you were... Felita Duta?
Saldaño.
Trump? Trump? Felita?
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Felita Durán. Estoy a favor del proyecto porque necesitamos vivienda para que sirve y digna para vivir. Porque donde yo vivo, altando a ratones, si debo la comida en la mesa cuando vuelvo a iratone ella. Y necesitamos vivienda digna para gente mayor y para niño y para nosotros. Y por eso quiero que por favor...
She is for the affordable housing and for this project because she sees that where she's living is full of rodents and she can't stand it and she needs, she feels that the seniors also need affordable housing.
Por eso le pido tome una decisión justa y no den la oportunidad de vivir mejor porque lo necesitamos.
And to give the opportunity to live better because it's needed.
He's estado buscando por un año donde mudarme y no he podido encontrar cómo pagar una renta de estancada que está. Necesitamos más oportunidades, que estamos que nos ayuden.
She's been looking for an apartment for over a year and she cannot find anything that is affordable.
Por eso estoy aquí y quiero que la autoridad comencen en el asunto porque necesitamos vivir digno. Necesitamos más oportunidad de trabajo. Necesitamos tener dinero para pagar la renta y para poder vivir dignamente. Por favor, ayuden, muchas gracias.
Jobs are needed, rents are too expensive. Please help.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sarah Porterfield? The items are closed for testimony.
I'm Sarah Porterfield, I'm nobody in particular. I live in Jackson Heights. I occasionally go into the area that we are discussing and it's an attractive, old-fashioned area with, with some very nice buildings and it's, it's neighborly and it's companionable and it's human. This project will destroy that for sure. I'm thinking, who gains from this project and who loses? Who gains is the investors, right? They are investing some money, but they are going to profit from this business. Those profits are not going to come back to Jackson Heights, they're going to go to the investors. Where do they live? Hmm, Westchester or wherever. Who does it not benefit? Some of the people who have stood here and said that they are for the project because they need better housing. I don't really understand this. I live in an old building myself. I don't have roaches, it's clean. I think that what these people need in Jackson Heights, and I understand that landlords are difficult, we need to get after the landlords to clean up the buildings, to get rid of the And the new project is not going to offer a solution. It's going to be a tiny amount of affordable housing for very few people. And it's going to be not that many jobs. And who's going to take those jobs? Do you think that they're going to be people who are working there now? I would be willing to make a bet, not my life, but I would bet that they'll be coming from outside. So, that's really my point, maintenance, not demolition, for the buildings that are there. And the... Por eso le pido tome una decisión justa y no den la oportunidad de vivir mejor porque lo necesitamos.
To give the opportunity to live better because it's needed.
He estado buscando por un año donde mudarme y no he podido encontrar como pagar una renta de estancada que está. Necesitamos más oportunidades, que estamos que nos ayuden.
She's been looking for an apartment for over a year, and she cannot find anything that is affordable.
Por eso estoy aquí y quiero que la autoridad comencen en el asunto porque necesitamos vivir digno. Necesitamos más oportunidad de trabajo. Necesitamos tener dinero para pagar las rentas y para poder vivir dignamente. Por favor ayuden, muchas gracias.
Jobs are needed, rents are too expensive, please help.
Thank you very much, thank you. Sarah Porterfield? The items are closed for testimony.
I'm Sarah Porterfield, I'm nobody in particular. I live in Jackson Heights. I occasionally go into the area that we are discussing. And it's an attractive old-fashioned area with some very nice buildings, and it's neighborly and it's companionable, and it's human. This project will destroy that for sure. I'm thinking, who gains from this project and who loses? Who gains is the investors, right? They are investing some money, but they are going to profit from this business. Those profits are not going to come back to Jackson Heights, they're going to go to the investors, and where do they live? Westchester, or wherever. Who does it not benefit? Some of the people who have stood here and said that they are for the project because they need better housing. I don't really understand this. I live in an old building myself, I don't have roaches, it's clean. I think that what these people need in Jackson Heights, and I understand that landlords are difficult, we need to get after the landlords to clean up the buildings, to get rid of the roaches. And the new project is not going to offer a solution. It's going to be a tiny amount of affordable housing for very few people. And it's going to be not that many jobs, and who's going to take those jobs? Do you think that they're going to be people who are working there now? I would be willing to make a bet, not my life, but I would bet that they'll be coming from outside. So that's really my point, maintenance, not demolition, for the buildings that are there, and the character of the neighborhood. And I didn't mention the overcrowd, but everybody else has, so we'll consider it said. Thank you.
Thank you. So the rest of the folks testifying are against the project, because I tried to even it out too much, I guess. So again, if everything's been said, I would appreciate it if we maybe just said I'm against it for the record, but Ariana Martinez.
Good afternoon, Borough President Katz. My name is Ariana Martinez, I'm a resident of Jackson Heights and a professor of urban studies at LaGuardia Community College, which is part of CUNY. Each semester, on the first day of class, I ask students a question, "Who is New York City for?" And each semester, a growing number of my working-class immigrant students answer, "The rich." The Heskel Group advocates for and profits off of generic national chain stores. In 1996, Mr. Heskel brought the Disney Store to Austin Street in Forest Hills, which he later replaced with an Ann Taylor Loft. Sun Equity Partners, co-owner and developer of the Eighty-Second Street Proposal Lot, is equally chain and big-box store obsessed. And now together, they signed a lease with Target, an anti-LGBT, anti-union, small-business-killing, big-box store. It is my understanding that you, Borough President Katz, have a longstanding relationship with the Heskel Group. Public records show you've received campaign contributions for a number of years. Though these campaign contributions are legal, this vote clearly puts the interests of one rich campaign contributor against the survival of thousands of low-income and middle-class, hard-working people. This is not Forest Hills, this is Almere's Jackson Heights. CB4, where the development is being proposed, and CB3, that is directly across the street from the parcel, have over three hundred and fifty thousand residents, one in four live below the New York City poverty line. So who is this development for? On behalf of my students and neighbors, I want to know who do you stand with? Who is New York City for? Is it, will it be for the residents, small businesses, parents and immigrants who have testified here today? Or will you prioritize a rich campaign donor and an anti-LGBT, anti-union, small-business-crushing, big-box store? Whatever you decide, the community will know, and the people will remember.
So, according to the project, which is for affordable housing. The question would be, what would satisfy you on the affordable housing component? And would a local hiring push by the developers, who really can't control Target, but if we talk to Target, about doing a local hiring and training component before accepting even applications for the jobs at Target? So would that make a difference to you in your testimony? And also, what type of affordable units? Although I appreciate all the political discussion, I think this really is about across the city of New York, about putting people in homes and about jobs. So the question becomes, what is it about this project you would change in order to make it acceptable to you?
Okay, so this is the area of my research, I've done decades of scholarship on this, I have a great deal of knowledge on this topic.
We're all really good at this.
When these new developments come into a community, it starts to catch like wildfire, right? You've seen it in Williamsburg, you've seen it in Long Island City, you've seen it, it's starting to come to the South Bronx. Rezonings result in new upper-income people moving into low-income communities and pushing out the longtime residents. So what would be acceptable to the community?
What would be acceptable to you?
What would be acceptable to me would be, at minimum, a hundred percent affordable housing. Now, the problem with Target is not just about their hiring practices and that they're anti-union and that they have a bad track record on LGBT issues. It's also that they write into their leases who they do and do not want to rent in the proximity to them. So there's, I forget what the number was, but there's a great deal of square footage that is not going to be occupied by Target, right? Not the twenty-two thousand square feet. Right, so the remaining. But Target has written into their lease that they don't want laundromats, they don't want dollar stores, all of these things that let you know, who does Target want in the community? Not the kind of people who go to laundromats, not the kind of people who go to dollar stores, right? So it's not just that they don't want businesses nearby that they compete with for their goods, but they also are trying to actively change the community, which non-affordable housing does, as well as Target. So this is kind of like, it's the Trojan horse analogy, right? It's like, oh, this is just one-spot rezoning. But the long-term effects of one-spot rezoning are, one-spot rezoning becomes ten-spot rezonings, and then ten-spot rezonings become two large-scale rezoning policies, right?
Yeah, we're talking about this project, so is your opinion?
This project is part of a long-term, a long-term strategy, we've seen it all over the city. Developers have long-term interests. There are tons of LLCs along Roosevelt Avenue right now, holding abandoned buildings, just waiting to get their teeth into this profit, right?
So I'm gonna ask a simple question.
Yes.
If this had any units that were market value, any, in any place in the entire city of New York, is it your opinion, and I'm curious, because I'm fascinated, is it your opinion that there should be no affordable housing built in any buildings that are not a hundred percent affordable?
The truth of the matter is, is that One Twenty-Fifth Street Harlem, they had the same discussion a decade ago. And what has happened is the African-American community has been displaced out of Harlem. So I don't want to answer the question like, "Am I against MIH?" or "What kind of..."
I was against MIH, I voted against it.
Right.
The question becomes...
The question, the answer, the answer is, we need to start doing urban planning for real people in real communities. We need to stop doing urban planning for developers.
So despite the fact that they have to build the buildings, is it, is it your testimony, again, I'm trying to get to the crux of this, is it that we don't want a building here that's part-market value and part-affordable? Or is it that you believe that all over the city of New York, we shouldn't have any housing that's part-affordable and part-market?
I'm not gonna say that there's never been a case of mixed-income housing being workable, but in New York City, because the amount of money and power that developers have, let's be honest, it's always going to lead to displacement. I'm not gonna take thirty, forty, or even fifty units of so-called rural housing, when one in four people live below the poverty line, and most of them through issues with, you know, not having good credit. I mean, I got a unit of so-called affordable housing in LIC, and guess what? On a CUNY professor's salary, I couldn't afford to move into it. Okay, so let's be honest about what this so-called affordable housing is and who it's for.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out what, how we could build...
I'm talking big picture, it's represented in this one's location, but these issues are citywide. That's why there's also, that's why there's also a growing movement against these... It's not an accident, right, that over the course of the last five years, more and more communities have been organizing against these things. Because people see the effects that have happened over the last decade.
I'm just trying to get details on the projects. And so if the theory is that all over the city, we really shouldn't have mixed housing, that's a theory.
We should build, we should build true affordable housing for the people who live in these communities.
I appreciate it, thank you. Francisco Tocatca? If you could say your name for the record, so it's said properly at times, I appreciate it.
Hello, good afternoon, please, President of the Borough, Melinda Katz, Melinda Katz and your staff. My name is Francisco Tocaisco. I was raised in Jackson Heights, unfortunately, I had to move out because the rent went higher. So I want to talk about the Target jobs. They said it was two hundred jobs. Well, I worked in retail my whole life, and working in retail, they don't, they only give you minimum wage. At most, they'll give you a dollar more than the minimum wage. And then, they don't, you're not even full-time, only managers get to be full-time. Everybody else, you will have to be part-time, even if you work full-time hours. And even though it's two hundred jobs that they were talking, it's gonna create jobs, only about a hundred of them are gonna get at least twenty-five hours, because I worked in retail, and I, and that's what they always tell me. So with that, what jobs are you creating that are gonna give, that are gonna benefit the community? Because the community cannot live off twenty-five hours on minimum wage. That's why I'm against the rezoning. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much for your time. Shriema Pendey?
Thank you, everyone. My name is Shriema, and I grew up on Eightieth Street, near the car wash, and then we moved down next to the Almere's Library. Now I live in East Almere's, and my mother has been working at Almere's Hospital for the past fifteen years as a community liaison worker in the psychiatric ward. So I've been down Eighty-Second Street a lot of times, and what I, I echo a lot of what my comrades and colleagues have said up here testifying against this development, but what I wanted to question the President, President Melinda Katz here is, you keep asking about the details of this development, and I'm curious about how you were going to make your decision based on the broader context of what this development could do in the community beyond just like this particular spot rezoning? Because I think that's what most of us have been saying, is that this could be disastrous in the long run. We're not just talking about right now. Because I think a lot of what the people pro-the-development have been saying is how this can benefit the right now. And what the developers have not been talking about is what their master plan for the whole community, for uprooting the whole community is. So really, what I'm asking you is to make your decision based on, okay, well, if a percentage of the units will be affordable, how will the rest of the market-rate units impact the broader community in the long run? Because it's not going to make other apartments across the street affordable, it's going to make them more expensive for the businesses and the renters. So, okay, the handful of people that can get those few affordable units, fine for them, but what about the rest of us that live in the area that aren't living there, in that particular building, in that particular floor where there are few affordable units? Yeah, that's all I want to say, thank you.
So even though we don't answer questions on this side, I think that we should just know, every single project is done in the context of the community and in the context of a planning of a development. There's never any decisions made just on a particular piece of property, on that particular item. It's always done in the context. When I was Chair of the City Council's Land Use Committee, I did this throughout the entire city of New York. And in fact, we not only upzoned only a few thousand, a few hundred blocks, but we also downzoned over six thousand blocks in order to keep our communities' low densities. So it's always done in context, so we appreciate the comments. I have two more testifiers, Abigail Avilas, and then Ernesto, and then we are calling it a hearing. Oh, you're going for this? We have two more.
Hello, my name is Abigail Avilas, I'm part of Queens Neighborhoods United, and we came along here with community members. Just when I stepped outside, a Three Two VJ member came up to me. I'm telling you this for you to have to your knowledge, they asked me, "Hey, are you part of the group?" Because I don't know what's going on, I was just told to come here, I was given a script. I hope you know that, that they were, they came here, they didn't come as part of the community, like the parents that brought here, we didn't give them shirts, we didn't give them a script. They came here because they wanted to come here, they came here not because they got a text from some random person, like that person was telling me, they came here because they care about their community. We're here because we care about the community. And you keep talking about negotiations, we don't want negotiations, we want you to vote affirm, no, on this rezoning. And if you do vote yes, I need you to know that we will remember when you run for mayor, because we know that you have those in your plans, okay? So remember that the community is strong, and we're here to tell you that you have to vote no. And if you decide to vote otherwise, the community will come for you, and that's a promise.
So, across the side, as much as I appreciate that, I do think it's important to note that there are many community members on both sides of this issue. And I think we need to keep that in mind, and be respectful of other folks' views and opinions on the project as well. I appreciate everyone's view, and that's why we're here, and that's why we have public hearings. If it were easy and if it were one-sided, I guess we wouldn't have to have hearings, so it's a good thing. Anybody else? Well, that's it. Oh, okay, so having no other testifiers, this item is closed. If you'd like to, yeah, if you'd like to switch out, we're not gonna be insulting, so it's fine, thank you. It's up to you. We have, no, we have, right now, we're gonna call the next item. Ladies and gentlemen, if we can, ladies and gentlemen, if we could, please go in and out orderly, that would be excellent, so we can have the next item. Thanks. Oh, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Ellen Drive Number Six, U-LR Number One Eight Zero Two Four One P C Q. The Department of Parks and Recreation, New York City, Executive Community Board, Number Eight.
Is that the first one? I don't know, in PDFs?
Okay, thank you for your patience, we'll bring the hearing back to order.
Good afternoon, everyone, and Borough President Melinda Katz and her staff. It is a pleasure to be here today and present this item on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation with the Department of Citywide and Minister of Services, as co-op can on this action. The Parks Department and DCAST are proposing the site selection and acquisition of the Brick and Hub Cemetery Site, which is a site located in Fresh Metal, Queens, where the community for eight. The site is approximately eight thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet. The site is called Stone R2A, which is a residential district. The area surrounding the site is, as I mentioned, R2A, which is predominantly residential in character. The R2A allows one-family residents a large lot. And the Fresh Metal Special Plan Community District is located to the north, west, east of the project site, just this area here. And the commercial uses are located along Union Ten Pike, which is south of the project site. The Brick and Half Cemetery Site has been in existence as long as early 1730s. The Brick and Half actually arrived at the New Netherlands in the 1630s. And by 1730, the Brick and Half already had acquired, purchased most of the land surrounding the project site for farming purposes. And the site currently has 77 grades of plots, which were established between 1736 and 1872. The community has been very supportive and have advocated for this site to be preserved as open space. Specifically, the Friends of the Brick and Half Colonial Cemetery have advocated for the preservation of this site along with the Fresh Meadows Civic Association. They have been instrumental in advocating for this site to be preserved as open space. Originally, they were instrumental in getting the site to obtain its landmark status. So the site is landmarked by the Landmark Preservation Commission. It was landmarked as of August 2012. The site currently has no visible gravestones and it's basically, you know, has trees in it and its overgrowth has taken over the site. The Parks Department plans to make some minor improvements to the site, including installing a perimeter fence surrounding the site. We're on this area here. And then we're also proposing to remove a number of dead trees within the site and also install a historical site. We also plan to explore an agreement with the Queens County Farm Museum, which currently has an agreement with the Parks Department to operate the museum in order for them to assist with the maintenance of the site, which will involve just cleaning the site. And then also during the policy review process, the community residents along with the members of the Fresh Meadows Civic Association, they also expressed an interest in maintaining the site. So the Parks Department really wants to explore the option and work with the community in keeping the site. We're grateful that we have sufficient funding from both the Borough President and also from the local council member, Rory Lanceman, for the acquisition, also to undertake a number of improvements to the site. The application will continue to follow the process. And this concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be more than welcome to answer them.
Okay, so there are really no major changes to the site. The grave sites that are there will be done in the map wheels?
Yeah, currently, I mean, as you see in the photos, I mean, there are no, this about gravestones within the site. So the idea is here to, for the city to acquire the site and to preserve it as an open space. So we're never posing any major changes to the site other than just stabilizing the site in current state by removing some trees, installing a perimeter fence to secure it. And also, I forgot to mention, the sidewalk is in full condition, so that will have to be redone or shutted.
Okay, so with the perimeter fence, would it be any restrictions for public access?
Yes, I mean, so the site will be secure. So we're not, at this point, we're not anticipating any public access on the site. So it's just be closed and preserved. It will be a visual resource to the community.
Thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Yolanda Gallagher. And while we, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, everybody, for your patience. The item was very well involved, so stay.
I'm Yolanda Gallagher. I am the President of the Friends of the Brick and Half Colonial Cemetery. The Friends of the Brick and Half was formed on a basis, on a requirement of the Borough President when we applied for the grants. And that is, we cannot, because Fresh Meadows Civic Association is 501(c)(4) and we are now 501(c)(3). Now, looking at the property, you look at the safety as a jungle in the midst of the 21st century R2 development. It is a very technopit state of working fine in a, in a community that is highly developed and highly desirable real estate property that has caused us a lot of problems. We cannot be chasing every prospective owner of this. We have been advocating this for half a century. Even the late Borough President Donald Manis has issued a court order to prevent anything built on it in 1973. This is 2017. And there are various advocates that the community had advocated on this. And seemingly, we need a perimeter fence, sturdy enough, not the chicken fence that is now in there, not the bamboo fence that it's been there. And it is, it is, and like, if we, the community, did not advocate enough, it couldn't be in a smoky mountain with all the debris in there, the raccoons and everyone else, all the trees that has grown up like, like in incredible heights. It is, we have old tires thrown in there. I hope you'll give me more time. We need to stop chasing owners and speculative owners trying to, as if it is a stock exchange, from a zero appraised value to 300, 400 market value. It is zero market value in any concept of appraisal. Help us buy it. And this is where you'll find a lot of those people who liberated civil war are buried over there. And this is where the first civilization of fresh meadows. Help us advocate for it, buy it, and stop all. Up to this time, we still have offers to the property and we always deter and discourage them. Help us because it's been a long time. Buy it, what do you call this? Parks Department, when we started this, you didn't have funds. Now you have funds, please help us.
Thank you. James Gallagher. This will record is a representative, a council member in the Lanceford office. I think the fact that we're hearing this in a U-LR situation indicates a support for this department.
Yes, thank you. A member of the Community Board A. We voted 46 to nothing in favor of the U-LR decision on this. So we want to thank the Parks Department and Rory's office and all our elected officials in Queens for helping us out. Just one thing, I'm not on the Board of Directors or Officer of Friends of running out, Friends of Brick and Half Colonial Cemetery. I'm just an advisor. What we'd like you to look into, though, is when you look at the Department of Finance, the two properties, they have it listed as a BO. All right, if you go in there, you look and see that B stands for Zoned Residential Non-Habitant. It should be Z8 Cemetery. It's been a cemetery since day one, going back to the 1740s. So if we need to, somebody contact the OF, change the records on there as soon as possible. So just one, that's basically, and we thank everyone for all their support over the years. And I thank you, everybody. Then we're off to our next, until we get to the ladies' office.
On behalf of the Borough President, thank you for your
Thank you, all right. Now I'm off to DEP where I work, token board of people by 1:30. Good seeing you, everybody. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this item? If none of the speakers who go to the hearing goes in the next.
Calendar item number seven, U-LR number 180243 PCQ. Backing into Department of Parks and Recreation, Executive Community Board, number two.
Good afternoon, everyone, again. So I'm really delighted to present another acquisition item on behalf of the Parks Department. This is an item for the acquisition, this is an application by the Department of Parks and Recreation and with the Department of Citywide and Ministerial Services as co-apply can for site selection and acquisition of a privately owned lot that is located in Sunny Side, Queens. More specifically, the site is located at 5002 39 Avenue. And the site is located between 50, 51st and 52nd Street. And it is a corner lot, it's approximately 10,000 square feet, which is obviously a privately owned. And the area surrounding the project site is generally residential in character, but there is a commercial overlay that is located directly to the east of the project site that has some community retail uses that serve the adjacent community. It includes a laundromat, a restaurant, and there's also a grocery store located in that area. As I mentioned, the area includes possibly one, two family homes and a few apartment buildings. This is the FIB Houses site, which originally owned the project site. Understanding as early as 1930, there was a playground that, I mean, the rest of the site is included now, was used by the resident FIB Houses. They had daycare. And at some point, the site became a dilapidated state and it longer was not used as a playground. And then at that point, 2007, the current owner purchased the site, FIB Houses. Also, I'd like to mention that we also have another park facility that is located approximately 0.8 miles southeast of the project site. It's called Lawrence Vigilio Playground. And then also to the northwest of the project site, you have the Sunny Gardens Park, which, understanding is that it's not publicly accessible. The site currently has some remnants of when the site used to be a playground. It has an open-air pavilion and then also has a shed, which I believe was a function as a conversation. At the time, it has to install inside. You can still see some remnants of the swings. We have funding from the local council member to acquire the site and also to develop the site as a public park. The Parks Department sees this site as being improved as a community space. And there is ample support in the community, especially from the Sunny Side Gardens Preservation Alliance. And they were instrumental from the beginning in advocating for the site to be preserved as open space and to be developed as a park for the community. And the council member is also very supportive. He allocated the funds for the acquisition. And that's basically conclude my presentation. Any questions or comments about?
And the application mentions that the park will be developed with input from the community as far as equipment and the types of activities.
Correct. So once, if everything goes as planned and the city is able to acquire the site, Parks Department will capture the mission specifically, will work very closely with the community to come up with a plan that meets the community needs. And at that point, we will go through the sign process and then the construction community will be building the park.
Thank you. Question for both speakers. The first speaker is Mary Chang. Forward identity self.
I got a card, it's in front of the table.
Ah, we're doing it live.
So my name is Mary Chang of the Sunny Side Gardens Preservation Alliance. And as he has indicated, we have been working since 2009. So that's nine years and counting. We've worked with over 300 Witsiders and Sunny Side neighbors and to reopen this historic park plan, which is within the Sunny Side Gardens Historic District as a garden park for public enjoyment. While we do have three children's playgrounds within five to 10-minute walk of the site, we like a peaceful, restful public green space that has the characteristics of Sunny Side Gardens. So those are us who have worked hardest for this park. I mean, we have a board, currently have a board consensus that we want this to be a passive garden park with walks and benches and that has native plants to attract birds and butterflies. So therefore, we are asking for the approval for the purchase of this lot for the park.
I just have one question. I understand you're saying you're preferring a passive open space.
Yes. The majority right now, the people that have been working with us, when I talk about 300 people, we had petitions that we presented to Jimmy Van Brema that spearheaded this. The majority of us would like, since we already have playgrounds for children, you know, with swings and the like, they'll have anything that represents Sunny Side Gardens, which is like, everybody talks about flying into LaGuardia and seeing nothing but green space. That's Sunny Side Gardens. Yet, when you walk around, there's nowhere to sit.
Okay, so I understand your point. Would you object to any active uses of this park?
I'm sorry, object to any
Would you object to any active uses of this park? It's 10,000 square feet, so the question is, if there was a mix of passive and active, would you object?
The preference would be for passive, but, you know, it's not over on some of the, yeah, the ladies things.
And as you were aware, there's other options with temporary applications and permission and, for example.
I know this is a step, I mean, in the past, I mean, I didn't want to recite the whole list of people that have indicated support, besides Councilman Van Brema, but Melinda Katz had already indicated her support for this in the past and as well as all the various assemblymen and, you know, Marky and Barneswell and Noel.
Okay. Thank you, be honest. Any last, Selvin Gutar.
Thank you. My name is Selvin Gutar. I'm a member of the Sunny Side Gardens Community Alliance, Preservation Alliance. I've lived in Sunny Side since 1986. And I've lived in Sunny Side Gardens since 1993, which is 25 years. And since I've lived in Sunny Side Gardens, that former playground has been operational once in 25 years as a playground for the children of the FIBS Houses, which is directly across the street. It's been locked and chained up for 24 years. It's an eyesore, to be honest. And it should be used. And what the majority of residents in Sunny Side Gardens would like is as a community park. Now, I'm very happy that the gentleman in the tan suit, I don't know your name, sir.
Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Lopez, what you've said, that there's going to be community input as to what should be in the park and what should not be in the park. And as you, sir, have said, there are a number of parks in the area with swing sets, dog runs, swimming pools. We would like this park not to have a dog run. There's plenty of dog runs around. We would like this park not to have sliding pod and swing sets. We would like it to be a park where moms can bring their baby carriages with their kids, where people could sit on benches, have a cup of coffee, read a newspaper, a quiet space. That's the type of park that we envision. And that's the type of park that we hope can be there. People in this neighborhood have fought very, very, very strongly for this space over the last 10 years. A lot of people wanted to do a lot of things. In my opinion, a lot of kooky things. One of the things they wanted to do is import folded-up aluminum house, called the Illuminaire House, and put it in that space surrounded by apartment buildings. Because it's a Historic District, well, let's have this historic aluminum house in 1932. This is a very strong community. We're very, very knowledgeable about what the community was and what hopefully We're very, very knowledgeable about what the community was and hopefully what it could be going forward. And we'd like to preserve this as a community park for residents, as I said, to relax, to sit on benches and to enjoy the surrounding environment. Because as I indicated, there's a park like a block away that's a private park, one of the only two private parks in the city. You need an entrance fee to get in. There are other parks that require swing sets. They require you to play on mechanical equipment. But we would like this to be, as you indicated before, more of a quiet passive park. That's the type of park that we envision and that's the type of park that we hope can be fulfilled. And we hope that, we ask for the endorsement of this purchase of this lot for a city park. And as Mary has indicated, every single public official has endorsed our request for this type of park in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, okay, continue.
Yes, I'm last, I don't know.
Are there any other speakers? None of the speakers will close this hearing. The Borough President's plan for public hearing is scheduled for May 31st.
Wow. This was an education, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately, you got caught up in this.
Oh, I was absolutely, because I know that name. I know that name.
I figured it was yours, never got that.
It's so valid.
Yes, it was, it was. I really waited in. Now, this is what I call quiet time.